Good morning. It is 9:00 a.m. and I will call to order the June 8th meeting of the Slayton County Board of Commissioners. Would you all please stand for a flag salute and remain standing for the...
Pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. At this time, would the clerk please call the roll?
Commissioner Shadwick?
Here.
Commissioner Sparks?
Here.
Commissioner Vidrickson?
Here.
Commissioner Weiss?
Here.
Commissioner White?
Here.
Good morning. If everyone can make sure that all microphones, phones, and other electronic devices are muted when you are not speaking so that remote observers can hear the proceedings clearly, I would appreciate it. Now, if Brad, our IT director, could instruct everyone on how to raise their hand in the meeting.
Good morning, Mr. Commissioner, Mr. Chairman. There is no one attached to the meeting at this time.
Well, thank you, Brad. And at this time, we'll move into our citizens' input portion of the meeting where citizens may speak on county government, usually limited to three minutes, and pertaining to items not on today's agenda.
Norman Madsen, Salina, Kansas.
Good morning, Norman.
Morning. Okay. In the paper, it's advertising for truck drivers. Are we paying for these truck drivers' training? And so, are we paying for other employees' training? Because if we're going to pay for one, we're going to have to pay for all of them. Are we reimbursing these people that already have training? I mean, we're opening a can of worms if we're paying for just one group. The tuition that was in the June 2nd paper, it says it's eight weeks' tuition, $3,459 for tuition. Now, if we send them to school for eight weeks, are we paying them their salary while they're at school? If I wanted to be an auto mechanic or any other trade, I'd go to school and get the training before I apply for the job. You're opening up a can of worms.
Okay.
Thanks.
Thank you. Any other comments? Seeing none, we will move into action items. Item number one. Oh, excuse me. We will move into the approve the consent agenda as presented. Yeah, excuse me. I kind of went right by that one. At this time, are there any commissioners who wish to add or delete items from the consent agenda? At this time, we will approve the consent agenda as approval of prior minutes as presented, tax rule adjustments as presented, approval of accounts payable, approval of payroll as presented, and approval of public forum agenda as presented. The consent agenda will stand approved. At this time, we will move into action items. Item one.
American Rescue Plan Act grant funding request with Tim Rogers, Salina Airport Authority.
Good morning, Mr. Rogers.
Good morning, Mr. Chairman, Commissioners. It's a pleasure to be with you this morning, to visit with you this morning about an opportunity that's very unique to the citizens of Slayton County and our region. And I know this is a, you have a letter of request for grant funding in front of you. I will not read that letter, thankfully, but I'd like to make some additional comments here and then turn over to County Administrator Phil Smith Haynes for any additional comments that he would like to add and then questions and answers that you all may have concerning the request. First off, I'd like to thank you for the opportunity to partner with you on a project that is very unique. That's kind of a one-of-a-time, one-time opportunity toward a gain of competitive edge for our recovery as a community, as a county and a region from the, really, the negative impacts of COVID-19, the COVID-19 pandemic. What's that competitive edge? That competitive edge is a chance to add nonstop service between Salina and Houston, Texas, which is the fourth-largest city in the United States. This really has an impact on a faster recovery of the travel, tourism, and hospitality industry, which is a very significant part of our economy locally and the region. It's also, really, it helps to facilitate the enhanced business recruitment, business retention, and overall quality of life. But the only thing I can equate this to is that if we could, would we build another interstate highway coming through Salina, Kansas? I think we would. Would we add high-speed jet service to the community? That would be almost an equivalent economic impact. I think we would favorably want to consider that kind of going forward. The American Rescue Plan Act grant funding does provide for the ability for the county to use their allocation of those funds, some $10.5 million, to assist with the recovery of the hospitality, travel, and tourism industry. That has been confirmed by U.S. Treasury that this type of project would be an eligible and permitted use of those funds. And in fact, through Senator Moran's office, there was a comment that Treasury would encourage the use of these funds and consideration of the use of these funds for this purpose. So it seemed very appropriate. What has happened with the tourism, travel, hospitality industry really has been significant. It has been an impact that has been, that those segments, those industry segments, really have been the hardest hit during COVID-19 and the pandemic. Travel and tourism has been down as much as 40%, 45%, 60% in parts of the country and the area. Right now, in this area, travel spending is down 24% still compared to 2019. Much of this comparison is back to 2019 because 2019 was a peak period of time for travel and air service and travel tourism spending. And really, and to summarize it, the total impact was of the pandemic on travel, tourism, and hospitality was 18 times greater, 18 times worse than the 2008 financial crisis. Full recovery is not expected to 2019 levels until really 2023, 2024. It's a slow process to get people back to the travel and tourism levels of 2019. There may be a question in your minds, would not this would be a good time to consider, you know, an agreement with SkyWest Airlines to add a flight to Houston and add that, and I would say it is. Based upon current passenger numbers, and the numbers that you have in your, in your letter of application request, I have to say those numbers were incorrect as of this week. In your letter, we showed last, the previous week, total of 880 total passengers. This past week, the most recent number is 953 total passengers. So passenger travel is increasing. It is, and if there was ever a time to talk to an airline about adding a flight, you'd want to do it at a time when you're showing progress in recovery in this market. It does show that we are, we do have a demand for air travel for this region. And we do can, are making the case for a third flight, and where would that third flight be? And we have identified Houston through a feasibility study that is available for you if you'd like to have it and look at that in more detail. The high load factors now also lead us to look, to think and have a confidence that Houston will be successful because we're not running a 20% load factor. We're running a higher load factor. That really gives us an indication that any revenue shortfall will be minimal and especially as we're looking at starting this in the fall, September timeframe, right before the travel, peak travel times of the holidays, Thanksgiving and Christmas. That would be very, very good timing. When we look at what is occurring with existing numbers, the Airport Authority has identified the need to make some immediate improvements at the terminal building to provide additional concourse seating for our passengers currently. If we're going to add the third flight, we have to add more seating for passengers because we most probably have two flights departing approximately at the same time. If you had a Denver flight and a Houston flight departing at 7:00 a.m. or 8:00 a.m. in close proximity to one another in that timeframe, we have to have room for seating over 100 passengers at the minimum. We've identified the improvements that need to be made. That contract has already been let. The Airport Authority will be spending $350,000 in concourse improvements that really go in conjunction with this grant request. And the Airport Authority will be there also with this grant request, committing $125,000 to market a flight to Houston in addition to the federal grant funds that would be used for a revenue guarantee. Salina to Houston, what does that mean? The numbers really are significant, and as the feasibility study really was surprising how much more it makes travel easy for residents of Salina, Slayton County, and north central Kansas. 25 new markets, just right off the bat, nonstop to Houston and then Houston to 25 different markets. And you always got to, always remember the reverse. It's to and from. Those 25 markets gain access to Salina and Slayton County. And our attractions here and travel here, conventions here, it makes it easier for visitors to attract businesses, conferences, sports teams out of those markets, out of southeast Texas and southwest Louisiana. Provides us connections, one-stop connections to 26 international markets throughout, you know, Mexico and South America and 13 improved markets, 13 improved connections to markets in Florida. Again, ease of getting in and out of the community, jet service, you know, less time, and we believe very competitive fares. We would be, again, the only community along I-70 that would have three hub service. Competitive fares are important to attract passengers to this service, existing and the future. I included in the letter of request a sample of the fares that were just for travel for like June 10, '21 and returning on June 17 of '21. And this is example of what we do on a weekly basis through our air service consultant. We monitor those fares weekly. And so you can see that fares to the top 15 markets compared to Wichita and to Kansas City are very favorable, lower than the other markets, as much as $200 lower, as much as, you know, you know, and, you know, out of Wichita comparison, out of Kansas City, you know, it could be $63 lower, $54 lower. That's a heavily, a market heavily dominated by Southwest Airlines. So we are showing, we're offering, and passengers are using and would be able to use in a Houston service, fares that are extremely competitive to attract those passengers to our market. Had a comment from an individual that was talking about the Houston service. I said, what do you think about it? And immediately, this individual said, it's immediately we're going to be bringing people in that are going to go on cruises. They're going to come through Salina. And what that means, they'll either come, spend the night before they catch their flight to Houston for their cruise line, travel later on. Friends and family that drop people off at the airport, they're going to stay in the community for, shop for a bit of the day or go get a bite to eat, and that's what will happen. It is regional jet service, 50-seat regional jets. That service will be, jets that we're using today and provides that service, that connection, about one, an hour and 45 minutes, the two-hour, you know, nonstop flight to Houston. Thing is important to remember too, and I didn't necessarily get this in here in this, you know, in this detail, but SkyWest uses One Vision Aviation at Salina for some of their maintenance. This also opens up the opportunity for One Vision to do more maintenance for what is called overnight maintenance or routine maintenance as a, as SkyWest uses Salina as a bridge between Houston, Denver, and Chicago. It opens up more opportunities there. And really, we have not had an opportunity to explore that until we get, until we know the flight is in place. Then we can, we will explore that in more detail. I can tell you with confidence and with certainty that time is of the essence. This proposal, this negotiated agreement with SkyWest Airlines that you have, that accompanied the letter, has a shelf life and is a very short shelf life. SkyWest and United are working now, today, to actually set the schedule for September 1. That is how the industry has to work out ahead of the, on the timeline, get ahead. That schedule has to be in place so seats can be sold. And, you know, this will be only 60 days prior to September 1. If we get it done by, if the schedules are filed by the end of the month and really they're, really start going, falling into place a week from today, those schedules, those seats have to be sold. And it takes that much line, that much time to get it into the computerized reservation system so it can be sold. More importantly, crews and aircraft have to be allocated. So one flight to Houston requires five two-member, five crews, five two-member pilot crews. That's 10 pilots. They have to be, and they're currently bidding on routes today and it requires at least one, one and a half jets to be required. So that's the vital resource that's being allocated right now. I know as of this morning that there is still competition for those 10 crew, those 10 pilots in that one jet that would be allocated to a Salina-Houston. That competition is a number of states away. That's to the north of us and that's to the south of us. And I just checked through our consultant, who else is in, is working towards this? Time is of the essence, so that's, we'd be asking for your action today if you so desire and if you are inclined to do so, that will help us get there. Grant administration, County Administrator and I have visited about this and I think with your consultant that's on board, and grant will be, the funds will be held by the county. The Airport Authority will submit requests for reimbursements if we do need to pay. And I would expect we'll initially have to be paying for the shortfall in revenue based upon the revenue guarantee agreement, minimum revenue guarantee agreement that we have with SkyWest. And, but we'll submit quarterly requests for reimbursements. The reimbursements will be, will include paid SkyWest Airlines invoices for any revenue shortfalls. So the money will stay with the county, will reimburse, will be reimbursed, will pay SkyWest and the Airport Authority will be reimbursed. We do anticipate the grant would carry over like into 2023, but we'll come back and keep you informed and providing the County Administrator to pass on to the Board of County Commissioners quarterly reports and updates on where things are going and keep you informed. Do want to thank your County Administrator. Phil really, you know, spurred me on to look at this. When this legislation first came out in March, he sent me an email and said, here's a provision in the legislation. What do you think? Do you think there's anything here that would benefit the citizens of Slayton County? And he let me take off with this idea. And we've also had involvement with the Salina Chamber of Commerce, the Salina Community Economic Development Organization, the City of Salina, Kansas State, Kansas Wesleyan. And I'm sure I'm forgetting somebody, but we've had group meetings that we've helped, helped me formulate this grant request and then present that to you today. In closing, I just want to really thank you for considering this. Appreciate you taking, considering taking the lead on a very important economic development project, COVID-19 recovery action. And I just want to leave with the thought that there are few greater contributors to economic development than quality air service. In addition to COVID-19 recovery, the addition of a Houston flight helps with business recruitment, business retention, and quality of life for all Slayton County residents. I'd be glad to stand for any questions that you may have.
Any questions?
Yes. A necessary question right off the bat, but as the county's liaison to the Airport Authority, I share Mr. Rogers's enthusiasm for this project. I can tell you, this isn't something that just fell out of the air that they picked Houston. It's been in the works for three or even more years. And if you would, Tim, you might, Gary Foss is the consultant that they have used for this project. And he is also the one that brought SkyWest to Salina. He brought Chicago and Denver. He's the one that he, I guess, I'm not going to say eliminated the Hayes part of it, but, you know, Salina supported the direct service. Hayes didn't. And, but Gary Foss was a real leader in getting that service to Salina and eliminating, you know, direct services is unbelievable. And his numbers that have been proposed and so forth hold a good deal. So I think we, I'm in favor of this without a question. And if I'm not mistaken, this is not going to cost the county a dime.
Correct.
This is going to be the federal money from the American Rescue Plan Act. The city, if you were to look for the city in Mr. Schreg's letter this morning, explains it all. They don't know what they're going to get. It's going to be a pittance compared to what we get. They don't know what's going to be available. They may not be able to spend it on the same things that we do. They're not going to get the money in a timely fashion, and they have a lot more requests for the funds. This would still leave, if we give this $1.6 million, it's still going to leave the county with well over $8.5 million or something to that effect. And we're going to have trouble spending all of that, I'm guessing. Well, we won't have. We'll find a way.
I'd be back.
This is an opportunity for the County Commission to take the lead, as Mr. Rogers said, and for us to really jump on this, I think, is the thing to do at this time. So if you don't mind, Tim, could you give us just a real small synopsis of Gary Foss and what he has meant to this project?
I was fortunate to be able to retain Gary and his ArcStar Group associates a number of years ago, and he has made the difference in our success with achieving jet service and working with SkyWest Airlines and United Airlines. Gary's background, he was 30-plus years with American Airlines. He ran American Eagle, the regional division of American Airlines. He knows the inside baseball of airline operations. He knows what happens behind the curtain and the executive offices of the air carriers. He used a contract for service with SkyWest Airlines. That's why he has a good relationship with SkyWest. He also, many of the, actually, senior management and with the United Airlines, actually, many of them used to work for him when he was an American. So he has a great understanding of the industry, of, can get the feel for what is, what would be, what's good. I asked Gary, said if this proposal was in front of you, if you're running American Eagle, and said, what would you think? He said, I would jump on this, you know, heartbeat. This is, this will work. And that's what his feasibility says. His feasibility says, and with the concurrence of SkyWest, that, you know, the actual cost is upwards of $2.2 million. And with Gary's help, it's been negotiated to revenue guarantee of about $1.64 million. That's the equity, that's the, that's what SkyWest sees, that it's not as risky. And that's their indication that they've bought into it by the negotiated number that you see here. And that's due to Gary's relationship with people at SkyWest Airlines and within the industry.
I'll say one more thing in favor of Mr. Foss. And all of his projections with SkyWest in regards to Denver and Chicago have happened and even beyond. I have a great deal of faith in his projections and what this would mean for the, for the city and what the travel would be. And of course, the chamber and the economic things that would happen, leave those projections up to those other people. But this is a big deal.
I think it's hard sometimes to know how government can assist in economic development, but this is one that makes sense to me and one that I believe that the citizens would accept and approve. So with that, though, I do have one question. Is this an actual contract with SkyWest United or is this an agreement or verbal or?
No, this will be with the funds, the pending, this is all pending action by County Commission, Board of County Commissioners today. Included in your, in the letter of request is the draft transportation services agreement with SkyWest Airlines. And it is, and we would be able to go ahead and finalize the negotiations on this agreement. And it'll be a one-year agreement with the ability to continue on. But it gets us, it's where, it's their commitment, once they sign this, it's their commitment to start the service in writing. Yes, sir.
You talked about a grant carryover. The 1.6, I believe, is, we're referring to as the grant and it's a one-year contract. If it, we're guaranteeing that it's going to cost about 1.6 that year to get this up and going. If it does do well and numbers are higher, would that 1.6 be less?
Yes. So, Commissioner Wees, here's my view and I think Phil and I have talked about this also briefly, so that I think the numbers are there, that we will not need the full 1.64 million over the first 12 months of the, of the service. I think we would, and step back and if there is any carryover, we'll have to probably come back and ask and consult, what do we do with that carryover? What will need to happen administratively and, and maybe Phil will have a different thought on this, but you still, we'll still need after any action today, go ahead and draft, get an agreement between the airport authority and Saline County. I think within that agreement, that's where we will provide, you know, more detail for you what happens on any, with any carryover. So, is any carryover still needed to continue the service? Then we would know a year from now and we will be able to give you that indication. Do we need it, do we want to apply to any other air service development project or does it get returned back to your, to your, your COVID-19 relief fund if the fund is, if the service is successful and needs, and no, needs, does not need any revenue guarantee? So, it's not the direct answer, but it's, those are the options I think you have. And one is to carry it over. Second would be to take it back if it's no longer needed, but we won't know until about a year, a year from now.
And I understand some of the logistics of, of Saline County being the sole funding source for this is, is a timing thing. Our money is here, your need is now, other entities don't have their money, even though they might be able to expend some of their funds for the same line, line item. Is that correct?
That'd be correct. I think that's, it is, is that what we know today and based upon US Treasury guidance, that this is a, a permitted use, an advisable use of the funds. The funds are on hand, I think, as I understand, as of wired, the first half of the year funding has been wired, so the funds are on, on hand, have been wired to Saline County. So, we actually can proceed ahead and sign an agreement, knowing that the funds are available and finalize a grant agreement between the airport authority and, and the county. It's, we know all those, all those facts today. Those are facts we know today and if we delay, this agreement could go away in a week because aircraft crews get, get allocated. Time kills all deals and so that's, that's a sense of urgency.
Well, I appreciate that. This does amount to about 15% of our funding and it's a, it's a taste of change. It really is with, with a short timeframe for us to really ponder it and, and come up with this idea. But I do agree with Commissioner Shadwick. This funding will help the community, the region and, and I believe it, it merits action, so we'll see how the vote goes.
Thank you, Commissioner.
And it's like me, when I, when I first read this and I, I, I had a lot of reservations because it's like being a businessperson in Saline County for years. The one thing that I looked at is that, is like I look at is some of the negative parts of it. Of course, as a businessman, that's what you do, but it's like you, you sit there and think about it, that we're subsidizing the whole region area of subsidizing their flight going out. And you talk about helping all the people that do come in to get those flights, spending the night and eating out and doing all this and where Saline County does not get any of the bed tax that's there, it's like still is, is another issue. But looking at it and talking to Phil yesterday, it's like, and I'm going, the, the whole thing comes back to the helping of the community and the whole region of growing is, is, is just beyond comprehension of, of the areas that you fly to Houston and how quickly you can get from point A to B instead of flying to Chicago and waiting six hours to get your next flight. It's like, this is just astonishing of, of the flights that are going to be available to getting people here and there. It's like, this is a, a kind of a great windfall, I think, for the whole Saline County and the whole region area. So, I'm behind it. Thank you. But, but it was some thoughts going into, yes.
Thank you, Commissioner.
Any other?
One, one more question.
Yes, sir.
Is it still the intent of the airport authority to continue with free parking?
Yes, it is.
Because you didn't put that into the price of the tickets and I, and I know if you're taking an international flight out of Salina, you're going to be gone for five, six, seven, eight days and I've parked at some of these other airports and that, that's quite an expense in itself.
You've hit on a very good point and it is still our competitive edge to maintain free parking. And any additional federal grant funding we have through the Federal Aviation Administration for the terminal building improvements, the grants that we have will permit us to, that we're seeking will allow us to continue offering free parking and that's our intent going forward.
Okay. Any other comments or questions by the commissioners? Any comments from the public?
Morning Commissioners.
Good morning.
Eric Brown with the Salina Area Chamber of Commerce. I'm here to speak about support of this, adding this flight to Houston. Obviously, the Chamber of Commerce has the Visit Salina or the Convention Visitors Bureau Division. Some of the things that, I won't go back over everything that, that Tim has told you, but some of the things that I, I do want to hit on, this, this flight would create greater efficiencies both, both from the, the airline's perspective and from one vision. I think that's a, a big piece of, of the support, Saline County, City of Salina, et cetera, as we, as we work through this. One of the things that Mr. Rogers talked about was post-secondary colleges and students, specifically Kansas Wesleyan University has a large group of students from Texas, Arizona, California. This makes it easier for them and their families to get to Salina and be a part of this community as well. When you talk about what Salina Airport Authority has committed, $475,000 already, $125,000 in marketing, that gives us buying power as the Visit Salina Division to co-op those marketing dollars and really push that Saline, that North Central Kansas and further catchment area to get folks on these flights. So, that partnership will continue. And just a little bit about travel, when we, we had this hesitancy, I think being an early adopter, revenge travel is a word that's going around in the travel industry and you're actually seeing that, you're seeing that with the employments, you're seeing historic numbers of people getting back, being willing to travel. And I think if we, if you, you know, we don't do this, we'll, we'll miss out on a big part of that market segment. So, with that, thank you. Thank you for entertaining this and I, I think that this, these funds will, will go a long way in bringing people to Salina and improving quality of life, as Tim has said.
Okay.
Thank you.
Thank you, Eric.
Mitch Robinson, Salina Economic Development Organization. I'm going to be even shorter than Eric was. Looking at the business aspect of this, think about oil and gas industry, think about those in the plastics industry. Houston is a Mecca for anything to do with oil and fuel, plastics, lots of different industry segments. And during some of the discussions that Tim has had and Eric's had and I've had with some of the company officials here, when they heard about this opportunity, they were all very supportive of that. So, again, thank you all for considering this and we support this full, full 100%. Thank you.
Thank you. Anyone else? I will bring it back to the commission for more discussion or possible action.
Mr. Chairman, I move we approve the American Rescue Plan Act grant funding request by the Salina Airport Authority.
Second. It has been moved and seconded that we approve American Rescue Plan Act grant funding request. Are there any further comments? If not, we'll call for a vote. All in favor, yea?
Aye.
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 All opposed, same sign. Motion carries five to zero. Item two, thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
RFA 177-21, Salina Area United Ways 2021 Make a Difference Grant with Rosie Walter, Department of Senior Services Director.
Good morning, Rosie.
Good morning Commissioners. I am here requesting today approval from the commission to accept grant funding from the Salina United Area Way 2021 Make a Difference Grant. A total of 4,500 was awarded to senior services to provide OCCK transportation passes to homebound seniors. Transportation options will include picking up seniors directly from their home or if they can make it to a bus pass, giving them a monthly pass. Alternatives for action, sign the memorandum of understanding for grant funding of $4,500 or deny the request. The staff recommendation is to sign the memorandum of understanding to accept grant funding of 4,500. Bus passes will allow seniors an opportunity to have transportation to the senior center or other activities or appointments for them. There is no cost to the seniors or to the county. Grant funding of 4,500 will be used to purchase the OCCK bus passes.
Any comments or questions by the commissioners?
I have one question and that is, this is strictly for the use of senior citizens.
Yeah, it's only for my Meals on Wheels participants.
So, in other words, someone who is 30 years old?
No. No, this would just be for homebound seniors. So, the thought behind this was because of the COVID, you know, my population for Meals on Wheels is dramatically increased. I'm trying to inspire them to get back out and to come back to the senior center and, you know, I mean, this way I'll be able to take them to the center and then bring them back home. And if they're able to make it to a bus pass, then I'll give them a month pass so that they can go wherever they need to go within that month, to appointments or wherever.
Thank you. Okay. Any other comments? Any members of the public who wish to speak? I will bring it back to commissioners for more discussion or possible action.
Mr. Chairman, I move we approve by signature the Salina Area United Way Grant as presented.
I second the motion.
It has been moved and seconded that we approve RFA number 177-21, Salina Area United Ways 2021 Make a Difference Grant. Any further comments? If not, we'll call for a vote. All in favor, aye?
Aye.
Aye.
Aye. All opposed? Motion passes five to zero. Thank you, Rosie.
Thank you.
Next item?
Item three, RFA 175-21, Transfer Fire Tank. Hannah Stanbaugh, Deputy County Administrator.
Good morning Hannah.
Good morning Commissioners. I am here on behalf of Rural Fire District Number Five and Rural Fire District Number Three. Fire District Five purchased a new pumper tanker and they are requesting to sell their 1995 Freightliner, that's a 2,000 gallon tanker, to Rural Fire District Number Three for a cost of $22,000. Fire District Number Three's Board of Trustees discussed this purchase at their May 24th board meeting and approved the purchase pending commission approval. Our purchasing policy does allow for purchase of used equipment as an exception to competitive purchase, so this request for action is more for the approval of the disposal of the apparatus through sale. Your alternatives are for the authorization of Rural Fire District Number Five to sell the tanker to Rural Fire District Number Three for $22,000 or not authorize the sale of the equipment. Our recommendation is to authorize them to sell. This obviously will provide some additional capabilities for response for Fire District Number Three in the end. The budget impact piece of it, the $22,000 purchase price will come from Rural Fire District Number Three's Special Equipment Fund and then be deposited into Rural Fire District Number Five's Special Equipment Fund.
Any comments or question by the commissioners?
Hannah, will this be replacing a piece of apparatus or will it just be added to their fleet?
So, for, specifically for Fire District Number Three, they had a very large tanker that was donated to them several years ago that they have now decommissioned. So, this piece of apparatus will, will replace that in some sense of the way. This is just their 8,000 Gatlin, 8,000 Gatlin tanker that they had several years ago. It was hard to find volunteer firefighters that could, that could actually drive it. So, this is a piece of apparatus that will assist them have a lot more opportunities for it to be used and a little bit more practical for their uses.
Thank you.
You're welcome.
Okay. Any members of the public who wish to speak? Seeing none, I will bring it back to the commission for more discussion or possible action.
Mr. Chairman, I move we authorize Rural Fire District Number Five to sell the tanker to Rural Fire District Number Three.
Second the motion.
It has been moved and seconded that we approve RFA 175-21, Transfer Fire Tank. Any further comments? If not, we'll call for the vote. All in favor, say aye?
Aye.
Aye.
Aye. All opposed, same sign. Motion passes five to zero. Thank you. Hannah, next, item four?
RFA 176-21, Radio Talk Group MOU with Hannah Stanbaugh, Deputy County Administrator.
Good morning again Hannah.
So, as part of the new emergency radio communication system, new talk groups or otherwise known as radio channels had to be created in the 800 megahertz world. So, part of that also process was Saline County having to receive permission from our surrounding neighbors, surrounding jurisdictions to program their talk groups into our radios. So, this request for action today is then now to return the favor and we have received requests from our surrounding neighbors as well for us to provide them with, with our talk groups so they can program our stuff into their radios. What this ultimately does is just creates that, that sense of interoperability. If you remember when we were going through the process of this new emergency radio communication system, that was a big thing, was making sure that we were going to be able to talk to our neighbors and our neighbors were going to be able to talk to us. So, in this request for action is several memorandums of understanding with our surrounding jurisdictions, also to include the Kansas Highway Patrol and Ellsworth Correctional Facility for them to receive our talk group information to be programmed into their radios. Our recommendation is for each of the memorandums to be signed and we have already, like I said, we've already obtained permission from those jurisdictions to program their stuff into our radios. This is just creating that, or closing that loop. There is no budget impact. There is any cost for other jurisdictions to reprogram their stuff will be on them. So, so if you have any questions whatsoever, I'm certainly happy to answer them.
Okay. Are there any other questions or comments? Any members of the public who wish to speak? I will bring it back to the commission for more discussion and possible action.
Mr. Chairman, I move we approve by signature the MOUs as presented for RFA 176-21.
It has been moved and seconded that we approve RFA 176-21, Radio Talk Group MOU. Any further comments? If not, we'll call for the vote. All in favor, say aye?
Aye.
Aye.
Aye. All opposed, same sign. Motion passes five to zero. Thank you Hannah. We, we will move into informational items. County administrators update.
Thank you, Mr. Chair.
Good morning Phil.
County Administrator Philip Smith Haynes. Just a few things today. First off, the National Association of Counties, NACO as it's commonly known, their annual conference is coming up and so there's an opportunity for commissioners, it's virtual and in-person hybrid this year. So, there's an opportunity for commissioners to attend. There's also an opportunity for commissioners to designate somebody to vote if you wish to vote in the NACO elections. And the county clerk has informed me as well that KAC is looking for someone to be the NACO- the NACO representative for the whole state of Kansas as well. So, I just wanted to bring those opportunities to the Commissioners' attention. If anybody has interest in any of that, please let me know, and we can go into details. The second thing is just to give you an update on the Expo Center color scheme. You may recall that our lease with the city of Salina specifies that we need to do some painting and some metal repair at the Expo Center, and they have requested that we have colors that complement but do not match with the colors at T-Pac. There are two colors on the exterior at T-Pac on the metal. There is Beridge Champagne and Foothills are the two colors. And so, our project managers have come up with this color scheme here. It's a four-color scheme that includes dark bronze, which is this one here, cityscape, which is this light gray, sandstone, which is pretty self-explanatory, and slate gray. And there's a list of which those colors will go on to which buildings, but I won't read that. If you're interested in details, come visit me in my office. But I did want to bring the actual metal pieces to the Commission because it's a little hard to just, you know, print them out and put it in a packet and have it look correct. So, just to let you know, we are moving forward on that. And last, but certainly not least, as Tim Rogers mentioned earlier, I did have a conversation with County Treasurer Jim DuBois first thing this morning to verify that we have received the first 50% of our American Rescue Plan funds. $5,266,188 was deposited in the county's bank account last night. So, we've got the first half. And our consultants will be here on July 20th and will be at your Commission meeting on that day. That's all I have for Commissioners today, and I'd be happy to answer any questions.
I have a quick comment. I sent Phil a email that I received from a constituent this weekend regarding discharging of firearms within a distance of a home that didn't belong to him and so forth, and that constituent was wanting to know if there was an ordinance that pertained to that. And of course, my response to him was to, if he felt endangered, well, certainly call the sheriff and go from there. And I would like to know if you have a response to that, Phil, as far as an ordinance or if this the common sense law covers it.
I don't believe that we have an ordinance, but I have forwarded that email to County Counselor Mike Montoya to weigh in on that. Discharge of firearms is a tricky subject because oftentimes the state legislature wants to weigh in on firearm regulations, so I've asked Mike to check and see if that's something we even could have an ordinance on or what the rules are. So, I'll be following up with Mike on that.
I was under the understanding that discharging of a firearm, at least from a county road, was against the law in the first place, but I don't know.
Yeah.
Like I said, I'll follow up with Mike.
Thank you.
Any other comments?
Can you give us kind of a synopsis of what the July 20th meeting with that consult group will amount to?
Oh, thank you, Commissioner Wiese. Yes, so part of what we have engaged the consultants to do is to determine or help us determine, recommend to your Commission what would be good uses for our funding. And so, before we get a deluge of requests from all sectors of the community, we wanted to go out and, you know, take a proactive look at, you know, what those potential uses are. So, one of the things that they are hoping to do is to do a community survey of how the community is recovering, what potential needs are out there that would still help to further the recovery. And so, they will be coming in, they're going to start an online survey probably right after the Fourth of July, and then they will be coming in in mid-July to do some meetings with folks in the community, including appearing, as I said, at your Commission meeting to get your feedback, and then also to promote that survey, hope to wrap that survey up by the end of July, and then have something to present to the Commission about, you know, here are all the needs that have been identified by the community, and here are strategies for how you could tackle those needs.
Thank you.
Okay. Any announcements? Okay. I will just be headed to liberal this afternoon to attend the Kansas Association of Counties meeting out there, so, and I think Phil will be my backup in making sure I stay out of trouble, so that's about it on that. So, anyway, we'll recess to room 107B.
Yes, Mr. Chair. So, staff would request three short executive sessions this morning. The first would be request to recess to executive session under the employer-employee negotiations exception to the Kansas Open Meetings Act for 10 minutes to discuss negotiations with one of our bargaining groups. And attendees, in addition to the Commissioners, would be myself and HR Director Marilyn Lemar.
So moved and reconvened in this room at 10:01.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. All opposed, same sign. Motion carries. Passes five to zero. We are back in regular session. And we have an item three.
Yes, no action on item two. And for item three, we would again request recess to executive session under the non-elected personnel exception to the Kansas Open Meetings Act for five minutes to discuss a department head evaluation, and it would be myself and the commissioners.
Second.
It's been moved and seconded for non-elected personnel. All in favor?
Aye.
All opposed, same sign. Motion passes five to zero.[1767.71]